All right. Hi, this is Heather von Mary. I am Chair of the Planning Board. It looks like we have a quorum. Diab Gerius is here, Maureen Meister, and Heather Hannan from the Planning Board. Today, we're going to do a lot of updates and go over a lot of things that we've been working on throughout the year and try to make some progress on those long-term goals and actions that we've been taking on. Before we begin, I just, I think we should touch base real quick on Maureen's letter that she sent the Planning Board and other members of the community regarding some of the things that are going on that directly relate to planning. And I thought we should start with that, given everything that is going on, and have that conversation before we go into more of the less, in the broad view of everything, the less critical things that are going on in this world. So, Maureen, do you want to give an update to everyone? I don't want to speak on your behalf of what your, what your letter was.
I'm actually grateful that you asked me to speak, Heather. This is a topic that for me goes back more than 20 years in my field, which is architectural history. The idea of expanding what's history, whose history, is one that's been, you know, challenged. It's the kind of joke is the dead white men, and that there's a lot more to history than dead white men. And in my, I've taught Boston architectural history for many, many years when I was at Tufts. And we included sites that were not just, we did include visiting sites. We did, we took field trips and we visited sites that were the old Boston Brahmin sites, buildings designed by Charles Bullfinch, for example. But we, from there, would go up to the north slope of Beacon Hill and we visited the African Meeting House. And that history for me is really deep, runs deeply. And I know I was interested in learning about the building on Cross Street that was a black church when Winchester had, past tense, a small but very clearly defined black community. So anyway, this is something I've been aware of for quite a long time. We have seen, I was not, however, aware of where the black community lived and just the circumstances that maybe now I'm learning just from today's emails. Maybe they were basically forced into a certain part of Winchester, a few streets. So anyway, that's the background for myself. But then, very recently, and Brian, thank you for your reports because they allow us to bring our knowledge to your reports. So Brian apparently was contacted by a developer, somebody I'm not familiar with, who's not from Winchester. Brian gave us his name, though I looked him up. He's from another town. And he was, he is interested in demolishing a duplex on Harvard Street. Now, in the world of architectural history, traditionally, this would not be seen as a high-style building or architecturally distinguished building. But in the world of understanding that history involves lots of different people from different backgrounds, sometimes these buildings are not fancy. I do want to say when our older son, who's now 36 years old, when he was in elementary school, we took a trip with him to the, to New Orleans and we then visited plantation houses. And at one of the plantations, there were slave quarters still intact. Well, by some measure, you might look at them and say they're shacks, but they were slave quarters. And I still, you know, visually, I can still see them. So the point is that preservation has broadened over time as well, along with architectural history, and that these particular streets where our black community lived have seen a fair amount of demolition. So now, when this developer comes in, we're, you know, what's the message that he's, he's going to be given? Is it just about what he can build as of right? Or is the message going to be, we in Winchester feel that this building should not be demolished. It can be restored, certainly. The units can be rented or sold. But we really think this documents the local history of a black community. And then, as this was going, as I sent this out, I was reminded by, I'll name Nancy Schrock, a member of our, a long-term member of our Historical Society, that for years, there was a plaque on a marker over near the Winchester Country Club to mark where there was an encampment of Native Americans. And that came down a few years ago and it's never been replaced. So this kind of marking history, whether it's through historic preservation or through markers, is something that's coming to the fore today. As I've gotten several emails, one I shared with the Planning Board and Historical Commission on the, from Boston Preservation Alliance, but I've gotten several others. National Trust for Historic Preservation has sent one out as well. So anyhow, first thing would be for us as a board to just understand that this demolition is something that has multiple implications. And as a board, a planning board, that this sends a message that we may wish to keep, that we may, there may be a message we wish to convey. And I think working with the Historical Commission, that has the right, the legal authority to review this, that we do care about these buildings. So I guess I'll stop there.
Um, Maureen, so I was going to respond to your email, but then because it went to the whole Planning Board, didn't, because that would have been an issue. I wanted to let you know too, that the Network for Social Justice has been aware of the neighborhood for quite some time. I had some conversations of members, maybe two or three years ago, regarding the history of blacks in Winchester. And the information they have is, it's pretty deep in terms of the people, not just the buildings. And that we actually had a very strong community. And what happened when they started trying to, um, address in the 70s, Winchester became extremely negative against blacks and pushed them out. And some of the zoning as well did it. So I think there's also multiple facets, that it's not just the buildings. It's also what happened and getting a better understanding of what happened with our zoning that did that and made them feel unwelcome and also made it so it's unaffordable. And also, going forward, how we can fix those wrongs. I know the Planning Board has talked for a very long time and we haven't quite found the solution, that our whole zoning by law needs to be scrubbed because it is creating, there's certain components of it that are not equal in a handful of different ways. And so it would be very beneficial to take it even to another level to really figure out how we can, we can't change the past, but we can make the future better and look at that as a board and try to figure out what that is. I know, Diab, you have done a lot of reading and research on this issue of past zoning and how it has segregated members of the community. And so I'd be interested in hearing if you have any thoughts on it as well.
Um, well, I've essentially read my, most of my sources from a single book called The Color of Law, which describes the history of zoning from the early 1900s, pretty much through the present. And describes it through, I guess, the lens of what it was actually created to do, which was to essentially create white-only areas and to prevent people of color from achieving any sort of home ownership or, and to essentially remove their ability to purchase homes in predominantly white areas. It's, for instance, zoning for the difference between single-family and multifamily zoning came up because of that. The creation of addenda to deeds to prevent homes from being sold to people who were not white. There's just an enormous range of measures that were used to discriminate at many different levels and many different ways to essentially segregate neighborhoods, to purify neighborhoods, if you want. So when we look at things in terms of Winchester zoning and we look at what we consider, for those of us who have only been around Winchester for a short period of time, we look at things and we seem to think that they have always been that way, when, as a matter of fact, zoning has been a very, has changed over the years and it always establishes new facts on the ground. And as humans, we tend to forget that those are not, they have not always been there. So when we look at Winchester zoning, we look at the placement of where the single-family homes are, where duplexes are allowed, the size of the lots, what is allowed on those lots, the location of industrial areas next to certain neighborhoods. Those are all patterns of use which reflect not just the industrial past, but also the people who were living there and the demographics of the population. So unfortunately, as you pointed out, or as has been pointed out, Winchester is a town where property values are very high. And we need to, in order to rectify some of the discrimination built into our housing ordinance or zoning, it's going to be, it's a difficult proposition because of the current facts on the ground.
Well, I'm going to jump in and say, right now, what's before us is a, I'll call it a threat to a neighborhood that, first of all, is just what we highlight, what we choose to preserve. And I mean, I'm totally, I mean, I'll claim it, I wasn't taking the charge in my own hands. But when the first National Register Historic Districts were created, they were, it was consultants, not me, but it was normal, that they identified the big fancy houses. So one of the districts is Everett Avenue, another is what we call the flats and so on. But what you choose to protect or preserve is what sends a message to say, this is what's important. And if you choose instead to preserve, whether it's slave quarters or a neighborhood where your black community lived, and then mark it, and it's there then to tell the stories. If it's not there, you can't tell the stories. And that's a, that's a starting point. And I think, right now, that's one thing we have right in front of us. And I will say, by total coincidence, I landed in a demolition delay hearing several years ago. I wasn't there for the demolition delay hearing. I was there for probably the addition, we're putting on a house next door. But the commission voted, and it was just by one vote, it was a split vote, to preserve and put on delay one of those houses. And after the delay was imposed, one of the neighbors had been there, because neighbors get notified. And she said, "We used to be called the Checkerboard Neighborhood." So this is even in her memory, in her lifetime. And it was because it was black and white over there. So anyway, I think that the commission had come in with a split vote. And now, I think it may be something that we want to convey, that his preservation has a role that goes well beyond just what you're seeing, but also in reflecting our values as a community.
And Heather Hannan has her hand up?
Heather, you can speak whenever, if the Planning Board's speaking.
It's hard for me to interject sometimes when other people are speaking.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Heather.
I was just going to say that I agree with what everyone's been saying, but this is related to my feelings about the tiny houses on Clark Street. I don't know the history of that street, but the lots and the houses are very tiny and I figured that they were working, worker housing at some point. But that whole neighborhood, you know, has been sort of destroyed in similar ways of just, you know, the original housing being knocked down and then it becoming unaffordable, whereas originally, it was an affordable neighborhood.
I'm going to say something super quick. I also just want to echo what both Maureen and Heather are saying, that this is an important area to pay attention to. The only thing I will disagree is that the person who's actually trying to knock this house down lives in Winchester. He does own a company that isn't, so it's, the person who requested the meeting to come in to talk to us is Sean and Brendan Lyons, and they live in Winchester. Just wanted to make that clarification.
Oh, thank you. So how do we, how do we share our views with, I guess, it's the commission, but also with these developers?
Well, I wanted, I actually wanted to get some more information on the history. I, I had, I already, I knew about the area because it, it came through when I was on the Historical Commission and I was well aware of it. But I actually want to get more information on the history to include, include in it as well. So I was actually thinking of going back to the Network for Social Justice to get the information and the records that they have to then turn over to Claire so she can do a better analysis, because I don't think she has those records or that information that the Network for Social Justice actually has regarding that neighborhood. The archives are also pretty, they were pretty washed in respects to that. So I think that would be helpful if we compare those two together to get a true, accurate information on the history. To then say, you know, go take it another step forward beyond what you're saying, Maureen. So that's where I was thinking, if that's okay with the Planning Board, to bring the Network for Social Justice into it and see what they have, and then send it over to Claire. And I'll talk to Jack as well.
Thank you. That would be great.
Also, the town manager has just entered. Just want to say, I believe she's potentially going to talk about the budget if she's going. So we might have to work quickly because there's a number of other meetings going on.
Yep. Thank you, Brian. I just wanted to make sure that we, we dealt with that right, right off the bat. And so let's, let's move on with the updates. I know that we also have the engineers coming in for the subdivision closeout update. So we may move some things a little bit around. Do you have any general updates right now before we move into, I believe Lisa's probably, we could probably unmute her to make sure she's here for the town meeting articles and the subdivision closeout. Brian, did you have anything you want to bring up before we go to those?
So nothing outside of, we could go over, but those, those, the note that I sent about the weekly updates for last week pretty much covered a lot. The only other thing, I guess, is that there's also something that you don't know about related to the MVP grant. So we're going to, so there's going to be two different grants, applications, and this is quite normal. And I'm working on one that's either a website for communications, a communications tool for not just climate emergencies, but potentially others. And then Beth is working on two green infrastructure projects. So she'll be coming in in a few minutes as well to talk about that. But other than that, I think we should just try to keep the meeting moving.
Oh, but hang on, it's Maureen. So Brian, you attended the Historical Commission meeting last night. Could you please tell us what went on?
Yeah, so they reviewed Lawson Road, Lost 58, Lawson, the one, the special permit that, sorry, the site plan review that we did. They voted that there was no impact on the historic resource for that, as well as the two other petitions that we were going to be reviewing next. They talked, let's see, about 910 Main Street. They were trying to figure out when they were going to be able to have that meeting. And then they decided to put that to June 22nd, which is the, sorry.
Are they running a hearing on it?
Yeah.
So they're back in hearing mode?
Yes, yes, they are. Just like, so same as the ZBA.
So we have a letter that, Heather, you didn't get out to them, and they're now moving forward.
No, but it didn't have to, so they, they had said that once they sent the letter back saying that it was going to be, you know, under the law, which was 45 days after the lifting of the executive order, as soon as they sent that letter back, that's when, you know, Bruce was saying that was when, that was when it was made, you know, that was when it's over. Meaning, meaning that's when we, we can't delay it any more than that. That was when we acknowledged the application and that we said that this is what we're going to do. And then they're making, they're just, they're doing what the law says, which is they have to wait at least, or they can, 45 days until after the end of the executive order.
Yes, Maureen. So the letter, so I spoke to Jack to make sure, because there's a lot going on right now that I'm responsible for on behalf of the Planning Board, and then town meeting as well. So I spoke to Jack very briefly about some other things and this. And he said that it was not on their agenda and that it's going to be out to the end of June. So in terms of helping me manage my time, he said, get it out in time for, if you guys have comments, before June 22nd, which is 20 days away. So I will get on it. I just need to take care of, finish closing up all the things that I need to do for town meeting, which I still have. The last thing I have left is recording my speech regarding Article 14. But then after that, it is the next thing on the list. But I'm just going off in terms of priority check down. If they were meeting it on yesterday, I would have shifted everything around to make it happen. But Jack said it was not on their agenda to discuss and the hearing is set for June 20, later in June. And Brian has a date now, so that's great. And Brian actually pulled up the paragraph that's been added as well, if you can see it on your screen. Maureen, are you able to, are you on a phone or are you on your computer?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to read it actually right now.
I'll stop talking so everyone can quickly read it from the Planning Board.
Oops, something, just a Zoom picture went on?
Making it bigger.
Oh, oh, it zoomed. Okay, enlarged. We had talked about at our meeting, I remember, because it was, you know, other people had ideas and it was a good one, about the word incorporate, that something about incorporating the existing building that we're hoping to see that incorporated into any new development.
That was in the last paragraph. Sorry, I missed that. So in order to achieve the best possible outcome for 910 Main Street, we hope you will incorporate the existing historical building.
But didn't we already talk about this and have notes on it?
Yeah, this is my edits. I just was showing it. So it's got, it's got to go out, but, or it's at right now.
Yeah, that's not, I mean, if this says you and...
No, not yet. So...
That makes no sense.
Okay. Again, we can...
I sent some, some email out last Tuesday saying words like, "Planning Board is looking forward to working with Historical Commission. This discussion to ensure the development minimizes the impact on the historical resource. Planning Board feels that retaining the historical building will enhance the development." And then add the word incorporate somewhere.
Yep. Yes, Diab, yeah.
So...
Yeah, can you, did you send that to me or to Brian?
I sent that to both of you.
Could you resend that, please?
I can certainly do that.
Thank you. All right. We already voted and everything, but that's just the update on that. Okay, um, let's go to town meeting article votes, if any needed. Brian, did you want to give the update on the town meeting article number 14?
Right, so I sent an email out today talking about the, the request of the Select Board to potentially indefinitely postpone Article 14 due to a number of things related to the budget. And I didn't know if the town manager, I believe that's why she was on, enough that town manager wanted to speak to that.
Hi, Brian. Hi, everyone. I just wanted to convey that there was some discussion at the Select Board meeting last night. There was no formal vote taken and everyone is, seems to be in support of Article 14, but there was just some questions about whether it should be delayed to the fall because of its potential complexity, a lot of questions, and whether, you know, there might be some pushback, you know, either related to continued drawdown.
Lisa?
I didn't, I didn't mute her.
I don't, someone automatically muted me. Or it could be the toddler in my hand who's like reaching out. So what was I saying?
Potentially indefinitely postpone.
Yeah, so they were, so the question was actually, wow, this is a really good article. We, we, we support it. This is a good idea. Oh, it's drawing on free cash. I wonder if this, should this be, you know, something for fall town meeting? And I wonder if the Planning Board discussed postponing it. Lisa, can you find out if the Planning Board discussed postponing it? So it wasn't like, let's postpone it. It was sort of like, what's the Planning Board doing? Is there any thought?
So, I'll give you, I'll give you the nitty-gritty, Lisa, of what's going on. So if we postpone it, we postpone doing it. And right now, the Planning Board is at a place where we can actually work on it. And so our, the last time we spoke about this, and anyone on the Planning Board, please, if you change your mind or you want to, you feel differently, is that if we don't give it to town meeting, then it's not being done. And if we, so if we pull the Warren article, you know, because people, certain people feel that this is better to spend money on, or this is better, or we don't, it's, we should leave it with town meeting to make that decision. Because if we don't put it before town meeting, they don't have a choice. But if we put it before town meeting, then town meeting gets to make the decision. And they may come back and say, bring it back to us in the fall. We don't want to deal with this now. Or they may say, yes, get started now on it, please, because the sooner the better. You know, it's going to put us back six months. You know, let's, let's get the ball going, let's get moving. Because we're here and we are happy to work on it and do it, but we need the funds to do it. And so it's really, does town meeting want us to do it or not? And it's really, it should be their call. So the last time we talked is, let's let town meeting make that decision and not take that away from them and give them the choice. And, you know, if it fails, we'll get feedback about why. Maybe they've changed their mind and they're not interested in looking with what's going on with North Main at this time. But we need to know that from town meeting and we can't get that without it going before them. That's kind of where we're currently at.
So Heather, can I, can I offer two additional lines of support that I've been verbalizing? So one is that, given that our H Housing Protection Plan has recently been approved and we only have a limited time for, you know, to be in safe harbor. So I told the Select Board last night that, that you're right, any delay in this, you know, any delay in this study will delay any potential projects that we could have down the line. And this would be a critical part for us of like lining up projects. And then the other line that I mentioned tonight at the public hearing, I think you were there, was about how this was originally $100,000 request that we scaled back to a $30,000 request as part of what's going on. So those are two hopefully helpful things that will get people to support it.
Yeah, and you know, if it fails, it fails. It's, you know, I don't, I think it's really, it is what it is. And if they, if they're in favor of it, they are. If they aren't, they aren't. And that's kind of where I'm taking it right now. I just don't think it's fair to town meeting to pull it from them and not give them a choice of what they want to put as important at this point in time. But yeah, no, you are correct. With this, that's going into safe harbor. There is opportunity all along Main Street to help build up those units. And the unit count, and we know that we are actually in some ways, which Maureen has pointed out, is along North Main, we actually are taken away from our percentage. We're not building to that percentage because we're not getting that even 10% ratio right now in construction along North Main. And so it's dropping us.
Maybe I'll jump in, because I don't know if Lisa understands the finer points. It's this kind of magic building. If you put it up, you go in by right. And the magic building is that... And the magic building is that you have commercial on the first floor and four units on the sec, uh, two and two typically, on the second and, um, third story, and that's by right. So they're all coming in with these, uh, buildings that, well, we've seen two of them. I can't say there is a million of them, but that's what's heading our way. Um, and these by right buildings get no review of any kind. They will be now, actually, to be accurate, they, we do get site plan review. But they, um, we just get these extra four buildings, so we get four more, four more, four more. And, um, there's not even, um, an addition, I mean, so we're just adding units without any affordable unit.
Um, Lisa, in terms of the state's budget, um, I didn't, I came in late to your meeting today and I wasn't, sure if you mentioned it or not. What is the state doing? Where are we right now with the state's budget in terms of their funding that they typically do to the town? Do we know where that is right now? Is that totally still up in the air?
Yeah, so unfortunately, it's totally still up in the air. I think the intent, um, is, is to give us some guidance, hopefully, um, in the next thirty days, but obviously it's not gonna be in, um, in line for a town meeting. So, um, what we've done is we've looked at their new revised estimates for revenue forecasting and they basically said there's like a twenty percent decline. Um, so we, we sort of used that as a baseline, um, where we anticipate a twenty percent decline in, the typical state, actually, I think twenty-five percent decline in typical state revenue. Um, we do anticipate that chapter seventy will be held relatively harmless. Um, in fact, a lot of people think that it'll be level funded. Um, we, we put in a five percent, we put, we've, we put a five percent decrease in there. So, what's the matter, honey? She doesn't like budget cuts either.
No, no one likes a budget cut. Um, and then, um, again, the, the other reason I'm asking these questions is because it helped, the planning board, if we were in dire straits, was gonna pull it. Um, uh, I don't see that if, are we in dire straits right now in that point, or are we just kind of, kind of teetering here a little bit and not quite?
Yeah, so we, we are. We are, we are not in dire straits right now.
Okay. Um, and, um.
Well, I, I'll jump in again. I actually could say even in dire straits, um, one aspect of government still has to do with land use and, um, we're still a fairly lean, uh, department. So if, uh, master plan's done and it takes after, you have to go through multiple steps before you show up at town meeting. And, um, and we clearly know it's more than twenty years since the zoning I was there, um, for North Main Street, uh, was enacted. And it's got some flaws. It's time to clean it up.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of repeat what Maureen said. Um, even if we were in dire straits, I think we should go forward with this. I think we can be, you know, humble before town meeting and say, you know, if you decide this isn't appropriate for this time, then please don't vote on it. Or, or don't, you know, we'll postpone it. But we do need to bring these matters before town meeting. Um, it's our responsibility to inform them of what we see as hindrances to development and how we're going to figure out how to, get by them. And this article is really designed for that. So I kind of think, I see it as our responsibility to bring it before town. And they can decide if they don't think it's, it's an opportune moment to, to fund it.
Heather, did you have any comments?
No.
Okay, so, uh, as of right now. Okay. Um, so as of right now, we're gonna go forward with Article fourteen. We're gonna continue to move forward with Article fourteen. As voted.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, were there any other? Is there any nays in there? I, I didn't, from, I didn't think. Uh, we don't need to vote. I just want to make sure that if anyone had, um, had wanted to say, no, Heather, don't go, you're recording and let's call it, tell me before I go and go and get my, myself recorded, um, talking about this. Um, so, thank you, um, uh, Lisa, so much for all that information. Um, that's really helpful to us. And is there any other town meeting articles that we, the planning board has left, Brian? I think we went through all of them that really relate to us.
Um, no, we, the only other article that we voted on, uh, was this citizens petition and that ended up getting indefinitely postponed. So that won't be in front of town meeting.
Okay, and there are no, um, Lisa, there are no other town meeting articles that, um, needed, uh, feedback from the planning board, correct?
Um, I mean, I don't know if you guys weigh, I can't remember if you weighed in on the MBTA easements when we, when that first went before, um.
We did not.
The meeting, okay.
Uh, no, we did. We weighed in on the MBTA.
But not the easement.
Not the easement, not the easement. I don't believe the easements. I could be wrong, but I don't believe so.
No, but I did address the MBTA in my update, which is written. Um, which the planning board, you all got a copy of it when it went out to Marielle and to be put in the packets. Um, and I did talk about the MBTA, but I didn't say anything whether, um, the planning board supports that a hundred percent or not. And frankly, at this point, it's, we move forward or we don't. Um, and so I don't think there's really a place. Um, they did take, the MBTA did take a lot of our feedback though, that we did give in the hearings and the meetings. Um, so that's good. And then as, uh, the other big thing that was done most recently was the ramp on Shore Road was moved. Um, they didn't move it as a ramp, they moved it as a stairs to behind Thompson Street, and then there's an elevator tucked back in there. That's how they dealt with, um, the code issue of the ramp, because they couldn't get a ramp in there for, how much space there was. So they did a staircase and an elevator back in there and they moved everything and shifted it towards, um, Wedgemere. Um, there are a lot of still funky things, uh, design wise with the MBTA. Uh, but we pushed, and Beth probably could talk about this even more if she's on, how much they've pushed to try the design group and the working group on the MBTA to push as much as we can. I know Sally's on here too and she's, her ears are probably perked up. Um, and push as much as we can and they're still continuing to push it. And I'm hoping, um, as Lisa mentioned in the previous meeting this evening, that the, hopefully the select board will push it as well on their side. And, um, that, um, Beth and her are working with the select board, so they're well informed on what needs to be pushed and where on the MBTA. But I, I don't see at this point it's worth, um, supporting or not supporting, um, the easements. It's more regarding the actual progression of the MBTA station getting repaired. Thoughts?
I guess I don't have any thoughts.
That's great. That's great. It's fine too.
I mean, in general, I don't have many thoughts, but in particular, I don't have it.
You have plenty of good thoughts.
I don't, I don't think this is the place, I don't think we have a role here. I, I actually get prickly about other boards getting into.
Yeah.
No, I don't think on the easements.
Sandbox when it makes no sense.
Yeah.
Not our topic.
All right, um, okay, so that's everything for the town meeting articles. I think we're all set with that. And article, oh, is it, oh, I'm missing it off the top of my head. Um, the one for Vine Street has been withdrawn. Um, I can't remember the number of it.
It was, yeah, it was gonna be Article two, but yeah.
Article two's been withdrawn and after town meeting, um, the planning board will have a discussion regarding some of the stuff with the CBD and if there's anything in there that we want to discuss and work through, um.
So Brian and Heather, you're talking about Article three. Article two is the historic district.
Sorry about that.
Just want to make sure people don't think the, the wrong meeting, of the wrong.
Right, sure. The Rangeley, the Rangeley Heritage District, uh, addition. Um, so it's, so by the way, um, it was said that it's a new district, that it's not, it's, it's a new property in an existing district. Just to make that clear from a previous meeting and not, not from our board. But anyway, it's a, it's a new property, not a new district.
Yeah, it's just adding one property into the group and the property owner is in support of it. Um, so it's a pretty quick thing, but, um, the map needs to get changed. The only way to do that is through town meetings vote. Uh, so that, yeah, so that one, we, did we vote on that or not? I thought we voted in support of that one.
Well, we can always vote again.
Vote again, just to get it on, to make sure it's on record and.
I, I move we endorse the Rangeley Park article, whatever its number may be.
I have my articles and motions right here.
It's Article two.
Article.
Yeah, Lisa, yeah, it's, you know, and then another one, Article three got pulled.
Is there a second?
I'm perplexed about my own role as a resident of the district. I don't think there's any conflict, um, be, even, I, I just don't. By the nature of what I know of land use, I'm allowed to have an opinion, but, um, anyway, uh, I don't.
Can you, can second it if she wishes to?
I'll second it, I guess. I don't know what to do, so I'm.
Heather Hannan, are you, are you in favor of?
Yeah.
You want, you want to just?
I thought she was asking if she could even talk about it.
Right, I don't know my role on that one.
Yeah, but we can, we can just sidestep all that because if Heather Hannan seconds it and we vote on it, then Maureen, you don't have to take a.
That would be great. Thank you, dear.
Sure.
So Heather Hannan, are you comfortable seconding that vote, motion? Um, any discussion? All right, let's vote. Roll call, please.
Uh, juries, aye.
Hannan, aye.
Von Mary, aye.
And I'm guessing, I'm abstaining. I just want that to be clear as a resident in the district. But again, I'm not sure it's because it's a town meeting vote, whether I, I mean, I'll certainly be voting in town meeting. So, anyway, I guess I'll call it an abstention for, I, I'm gonna greet Nancy and thank her for taking minutes here. So I guess it's an abstention as a resident in the district.
Yeah, so that's three oh one one, um, with Meister being abstaining and Craigor absent.
All right, so, um, the, the motion passes and the planning board supports Article two. And I think that's all.
I believe so.
All right, um. Okay, so then next up, um, is Beth on the call? Beth, are you here?
I'm here.
Hi, Beth. So Beth, Beth Rudolph, the town engineer. Um, you are joining us for the fee schedule for subdivisions with Brian, correct?
Yep.
As, as well as one other, as well as one other piece that's on, that's on here as well. Um, I don't, but I, I think.
Take it away.
Um, Beth, did you want to start here? Do you want to quickly do subdivisions and, uh, fees?
Um, I leave it up to you, Brian.
Okay.
I was just here for support. I didn't really have, I wasn't taking the lead, I don't think.
Sure. Yeah. Um, so what, um, I had sent this, this is, um, part of the MVP grant, uh, that, so we're gonna be applying for two different funds. Uh, this fund is, uh, this grant, um, is for, uh, two nature-based solution projects for design and, um, um, this is, the application is being, uh, kind of spearheaded by Weston and Sampson. Um, and then I'm doing the, uh, other grant, which is about a similar, probably a little bit less in funding, probably more like thirty thousand for some type of, uh, website or communications tool to, um, talk about, um, climate and other types of emergency preparedness. Um, so this is the letter from, uh, Beth's project and you're gonna be getting one from me relatively soon.
Can you scroll down, Brian?
I'm sorry?
Can you scroll down?
Sure. That would, that was, it's a, it's just a quick letter of support for the project. Um, since they are roughly about the same and they, neither of ours are very large assets, about thirty to forty for each of us. Um, they've given grants out to multiple communities at these sixty thousand plus for even more than, you know, for, uh, for instance, Medford in twenty eighteen got, two projects for sixty thousand each. We're looking at like maybe thirty on, uh, my side for climate and about some upwards of fifty, I believe. Beth said, um, for, for this, for this, uh, grant.
So are you looking for the planning board to support this?
Yeah, that was, yep, that was what, so I'd, uh, yeah, I'd sent this and, um, yeah, I was looking for, um, for support from, Beth was looking for support from the board and then we, um, yeah, that's it.
Okay, who chose that, what projects were going in for the, for the grant?
Uh, that was what the first part was, that we had a, a, uh, grant, a, a grant for the planning process. So we had a number of individuals from the community um, that, uh, made our MVP action grant possible. So, uh, the people that actually did this were the MVPs, um, not just a core group, it was a, a number of about forty individuals uh, between staff and residents and experts, um, that came up with several different projects and these were two of them.
Okay.
And do we have any details on these projects? Uh, while I feel that I will wholeheartedly support this, I have no idea what the project is other than that it's a nature-based stormwater feature, which.
I can talk about the project a little bit if you'd like.
Sure, because it sounds to me like it could be a fountain.
I try not to design fountains in our stormwater infrastructure. That happens on occasion if we get too much rain, but never on purpose. Um, so we actually had a grant last year with the DEP EPA and they had, um, they brought in folks from the Stormwater Center at UNH. Um, and as part of that, we are looking for opportunities to reduce phosphorus throughout the watershed. It was actually a grant, um, in Arlington was the other community that had received it. So we were, we were all working together. Um, so as part of that project, we identified two locations in Winchester where we thought it would make sense to put a green infrastructure project on town-owned land. So, um, one location is, um, the Washington Street Park, which is across the street from the Winchester Hospital property on Washington Street. And the other, um, location is the, um, park at the corner of Middlesex Street and Palmer Street, which is a town-owned piece. So the idea would be to put in a small, um, or as large as we can make it, to be honest, um, infiltration system in those locations that would take drainage out of the, um, out of the existing drainage system and would allow for infiltration, would allow some, um, phosphorus removal before the, that water is discharged to the Arizona River or Budge Pond, uh, in the case of Middlesex Park. So the request, um, that we're working on right now is for design of those two projects. And then I expect that we would, um, follow up next year with an action grant request for, um, construction.
So would these reduce the amount of land that's, I, I'm familiar with the park on Middlesex and Palmer, I think. Um, is, is that, would they reduce the amount of land available for recreational use by residents?
No, no, it's very similar to like the project that we just, um, finished up at West Side Field. It's underground tanks. So, um, once it's, and we're not, I'm not expecting anything nearly as big as what we did at West Side Field, but, um, once it's constructed, it's, uh, nobody really even knows it's there.
Okay, so, I mean, one thought would be, um, to, when you said natural stormwater feature, I was thinking of something like a rain garden, which would have educational aspects to it as well as, um, dealing with stormwater runoff. Is there any way of including an educational component in this?
Yeah, we could definitely put up some signage. We actually, um, we have a three nineteen grant with the Mystic River Watershed Association right now. We're doing something similar at West Side Field where we put signage up to show people what's there. Um, rain gardens, I'm a little wary of just because of the maintenance that's involved. Um, and that, you know, when, when we put in plantings that look great for the first year and then they very quickly become overgrown. So that's certainly my preference for underground.
Tossing out the idea of having something visual so that people can actually see something rather than.
Yeah, yeah.
Diagram of a big tank underground.
Yep, um, so I think, like I said, this is just a design request, request for design funding and then we would follow it up with, um, with, um, construction funding requests in the next action grant cycle. So that would certainly, could certainly be included in that component.
Maybe put a fountain in there.
Okay, so. Okay, so um I think Beth's looking potentially for a vote of endorsement and then we can move on to potent uh subdivisions and uh we'll go from there.
I'll take a motion if someone would like to make one, entertain one.
I move that we support the uh who is this actually providing, who is doing this? No, who, this is from um I guess we're supporting the MVP project?
Am I signing this? Is it for me?
Yeah, but I'm trying to understand which organization we're supporting.
So you're supporting the town's application for an MVP action grant.
Okay, so my motion is I suggest that I, I uh uh I move that we support the town's application for an MVP access grant to develop designs for nature-based stormwater features.
It's action grant, but.
Action, sorry.
Yeah. Thank you.
Lot of occasion noted of the uh motion. Do we have a second?
Well, I'll second it. It's Maureen.
Okay, do you need to discuss or are we ready to vote? I'll take that as a vote. Roll call?
Juries, aye.
Hannah, aye.
Meister, aye.
Von Mary, aye. Motion passes four oh with uh Betsy Cregor absent. And I will assign that and I will uh send it over to you, Beth, for you to include in your application.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and going on to subdivision.
All right, so we found that um for the uh the fees that needed changing had to do with the definitive subdivision. Um, we went through a number of different uh situations. Um, and then we actually ended up uh talking and looking at Lexington's to see what uh would be uh just want to see what they were doing in terms of how it would compare to ours. So it were really looking at here this definitive subdivision. So a three lots sub, or a three lots subdivision that we uh would, in in Lexington would be at the, about thirty five hundred dollars for the fee and a three lots subdivision here. Um, even if there was no um preliminary, we were talking about five hundred, there's no doubt it's less than five hundred here. So it's a total of a thousand dollars. But uh this seems to be overly complicated for little reason other than the potential roadway gr- uh gradient for the amount of subdivisions that we're having and it's something like a flat base just based upon number of lots of whether it's residential and non-residential, seems to make uh at least more sense to the board previously. So um this is on our uh agenda, meaning that we could make the changes to these fees. I believe, I don't believe they have to go to the select board. I believe these are our fees.
They are. I know that, Brian.
Yeah, so thank you, Maureen. Um, so, so this is something that we could do tonight uh uh if we um, I guess if, well, meaning it's possible that we could do this night because it was properly noticed.
Brian, could you scroll down to that table? Um, these are, the table is our, is us or Lexington?
Okay, so um the the this, the table here um that's on the bottom part of this page is Lexington. This is all Lexington here and mainly what we're looking at is the definitive subdivision for the three lots. Um, so this would be the minimum for really any, for, well, the minimum is obviously two thousand, but at least it's, it's more of a base that's more in line. We're, we're, ours are talking about a base of five hundred, so.
Right, right. So what I'm actually, sorry to confuse things, the, the, on the next page.
That is ours.
That is ours, okay.
This is ours. This was ours as comparison.
And the environmental, I'm trying to understand, um, I mean, obviously we broke it out in, with all these different sub-fees bit for some reason, um so are there, are you saying those considerations have never really been taken into account or they're unimportant and we can cover it with just a single fee?
No, I think that um we recently, we have not had, not that we overlooked that, but there, the um that the environmental considerations, um they haven't, certainly the roadway, roadway, whoa, that's a tough one, roadway gradient uh has come into play. But that was it. The, the environmental consideration says never, has, hasn't come into play. I'm sorry, it's not on this sheet. I can.
That's okay.
Yeah.
So so the, 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 I guess the answer, the question I'm trying to ask is do we lose anything other than complexity by going to a simpler form of the fee? Are we missing um complexity of projects by just going to a simple flat fee?
I think from the exercise that we had figured out, uh we determined that um we just so recently had kind of what we would imagine is one of the easier subdivisions uh in, in uh Dunster towards an extremely complex, which was Abbey. So there's no way to cover, I mean, if we figure out and and the money's never gonna shake out in favor of, of the town. Basically, is the easiest way to say it. So because of that, having a reasonable base like this is, I kind of think makes sense. Beth can obviously chime in, that she's the one doing a lot of this work as well. Um, but that, I think.
I thought what Yev was asking is if you took two sample projects, would we lose any money? Like a very complex project, would we lose any if we went to the simplified method of Lexington? Like if you take Abbey Road, how would we have gotten more money or less money?
Oh, we certainly would have gotten m- uh more money from Lexington. I, what I was trying to say was that this is uh there's no way to account really even for the, even whether there's environmental considerations or not, we're not gonna make out.
Yeah, no, I was, I mean, one of the, one of the approaches to looking at fees is to say if you raise a fee, then they are per, I mean, depending on the size of the project, that it may make them less likely to pursue something which requires them to pay a higher fee.
I don't, no, I I can't imagine that's the case at all.
Yeah, okay, so that, that, that shoots down that idea. Um, but for instance, the length of the road and is there a reason why putting in the length of the road and raising, having it as part of our fee structure? Is there a reason we shouldn't consider? I mean, I'm trying to understand why we would, why it's there and does it provide any benefit in terms of the project or is it just, was it just something someone came up with?
I was, I've um, I worked with the board years ago whenever these um, the original fees were put into place. I mean, ar- before this fee structure was in place, it was like, you know, fifty dollars for a definitive subdivision. So this was a, a big step up at the time. Um, and the concept in Landscrim Black was act- actually on the board at the time we did this as well. The concept was just that the more complicated the project, the more expensive it should be to file, right? So we tried to think of the things that would make a project more complicated to review. So obviously, longer roads are more complicated, um steeper gradient would be one thing. And easily, things that you could easily see from an application, like not something that you'd have to spend a lot of time reviewing a plan to figure out. Um, the environmental considerations, I can't remember what all the things listed there are, but obviously the more environmentally complex the project, it is, the more time it takes to review it. So that's how the board at the time came up with this um structure, for, for better, for worse. I agree overall, I think the prices are low compared to what other communities charge.
I mean, one option could be we just simply multiply these by inflation over the last twenty-five years. And so we get, I mean, if there is value in trying to track the complexity of a project, then, and the only problem is that the fees are too low. Then we just, like I said, multiply these by inflation and we come up with fees that are appropriate for today, but we retain the structure. But if there's no value to this structure, then going to a flat base fee, I'm just trying to understand from your perspective, is the structure valuable?
I don't, I mean, I would look, I guess, to Brian or to others, you know. I think it's one way to figure out how complicated a project could be at the application phase, right? Until you get into a project, it's always difficult. The easiest prod, the shortest project could be the most difficult from, for other reasons, right? So it's hard to say, but you know, at the time, this was just an easy way to look at an application and, and add that level of complexity into it. So I mean, I think it's, you know, it's really up to the board in terms of what your comfort level is whether you want a more kind of generic fee structure like the Lexington or you wanna have kind of this multi-step one like we have now.
Well, I'll jump in cuz I was there um with Beth and I think the concept here is still better than Lexington's, but just the number of um the, the dollars attached is way out of line. It's way too little. Um, but I would, I, when we last discussed this fee schedule, whatever, a week or two ago, I did ask if we could bring in of whether it's council or whether it's just more examples. Um, but there's, and then I guess I would like to understand to what extent, looking back, Beth, you and Brian could have looked at Abbey Road and said, this is going to be time-consuming. It's four to five lots, depending, I guess we'd call it five. But that's like mid-level here, but it, it was, it was a, it was, it took up many, many, many hours. Maybe more than you anticipated, but you probably would have anticipated it still would take more than, let's say, more than twenty-five hours. I mean, more than a hundred, I don't know. What would you have guessed even at the beginning? And what would have triggered that or what would have, what would have um highlighted to you that this was going to take time?
Uh, I, that's a complex question. And an answer that I, 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 I mean, I, I don't know how I could quantify exactly or.
No, not quantify. No, 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 we're, right now, we're not doing quantifying. Right now, we're just going to look for characteristics of the application.
So I think there's more than just the land itself that adds into the complexity of how much time and effort we put into a project. And not all those things can be quantified at an app, at the, the stage at which the application is submitted, unfortunately.
So another, just, okay, I'll catch that one. There, another idea would be, let's, um, the application comes in and it goes to when there's a certain what, I guess I'll say this, if there's a timeline even, maybe it's even uh within six, if it can, if it's still under construction, um whatever, within, you put a time on it, within six months, then it'll be reviewed again for the, before the uh approval, um before the final. Uh, it just, the cost has to be, we've gotta capture some of this. This is not right for the town of Winchester to be uh carrying this burden.
Yeah, we're, we're essentially subsidizing the developers.
Yeah.
I, I think, I mean, that, again, you, you, you pose a very complex uh question. I think that um that it makes sense to, one, figure out what these environmental considerations are. Two, to see if we should add or subtract any from there and then raise these fees accordingly based upon uh, you know, based upon inflation or more, or whatever makes sense for these times.
Well, I, I still, I have one more comment, which is that the complexity of the project does not go up linearly with the number of lo- lots.
That's exactly what we're talking about.
Usually goes, make it go up geometrically or something because combinations go up. The other thing is, and, and I'm gonna bounce this back to, to Beth, is that you've had twenty years plus or however long this, this current.
I haven't been here quite that long.
Well, you have had, you have had N years, N years of dealing with this particular fee schedule.
Yeah, but we've only had like three subdivisions submitted. We're not, we're not overwhelmed by subdivisions in this town.
Okay, so I'm actually a little concerned that I think we should include A and R fees here as well.
We, we actually didn't have a problem with the A and Rs, that we don't have, so we did, we did actually make that decision that the, 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 actually, the current A and R fee makes sense.
Okay, cool. Okay, that's fine. So I'm still trying to understand. So I agree with Maureen that we need to think about the, the characteristics of projects that would raise red flags. And I think this is actually not a bad list. Um, so one of the other things we might wanna add, well, I don't know, looking, seeing what the environmental considerations would be. But I agree with Maureen, going back to legal and seeing what is possible. I like the idea of giving them an initial bill and then six months later saying, hey, you guys have wasted a lot more of our time, the price is gonna go up.
Yeah, it's just, I don't think you could do that.
Ryan. Hang on, hang on, hang on. No, at some point, we're all just theorizing and we can, we don't have to just do what they're doing in Lexington. Already what you see is, on our schedule is not what they do in Lexington. I think we have to define the problem and I get, figure out what's going to be the solution. I think we're in a different place. We have, we're basically, just as Beth said, we see very few subdivisions. But most of them are um sub, are being proposed because they're bears. They're, um, and the one on, um, the one that we just approved was pretty unusual cuz it's actually, it was an existing road. Um, but a true subdivision, it's going to be on ledge, it's going to have huge drainage problems. But I wanna go back, just one sec, I'll stop talking, but for each of you, I'd like to hear from both Beth and Brian. What, don't look at this chart for a sec, just what did you see when the Abbey Road um definitive was filed? What did you see and what did you anticipate in terms of how long it would take and what the challenges would be?
Uh, I mean, the one thing is obviously, like you said about ledge, so what, in terms of the, you know, the, the actual area, it was, we always knew, we always knew it was gonna be very tight in there. That has definitely caused a lot of issues. Um, but the thing is, it was governed by a land transit, like there was a lot of things governing the property. It wasn't just when we, the subdivision came in, this was the result of, you know, many years of the planning board's involvement, non-involvement. You know, threats of forty Bs, having to go to the, uh, then actually having to go to town meeting to make this development agreement as well as a land transfer. I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on with this.
Oh, could we describe that as a different category of land?
Yeah, that, well, that's what I'm saying, is there's no way to cover.
Yeah, there would be. I think there, I think we could do better.
No, a hundred percent agreement. We definitely can do that.
We, yeah, I mean, I think Beth could cover all of the engineering things, like for instance, is there ledge? How much fill is gonna be taken out?
Right.
Right, but you have to understand that you, you're trying to make this determination when the application is filed and not all of those things are easily determined or known at the time the application is filed because.
Exactly. So I, so that's a different point. Um, the first though is, we really do want that list and land transfer would not be unusual it, given where Winchester is in terms of development now. So if there's going to be a land transfer, I think that's a factor and we should throw that into the mix. Um, if there's um, a, amount of cut and fill might be something else that's going to be, um, or ledge is another one, blasting. Those are the realities of subdivision now. Um, so that's one issue. And then back to you, Beth, the other issue is that ca- um, I'd like to, again, creative work, let's do some creative thinking here that uh for more complicated projects, that we want a, a chance to get in there and review where we are and then um present that to the development team.
I'm not sure what, I understand what you mean there.
We got a second bite at the apple in terms of charging them a fee.
The, the, the one thing I was gonna mention, we have to remember that on these complicated projects, we have, or the board has the ability to enact fifty-three G, which means that, then they're gonna be paying, um, you know, a peer reviewer to review this as well. So it's not just our review time, i- any more complicated projects like Abbey Road, they were also playing, paying directly an outside consultant to do the peer review. So there is more to it than just this filing fee.
Um, I'm gonna jump in real quick. I was not part of, obviously, cuz you guys know that, part of the, the current fee structure that is there for the subdivisions. Um, the, there's a, I always, with the fees, I prefer them to be as easy and clear and concise as possible. So like with the building fee, right, you, you submit how much it's gonna cost, it's a submit, a straight-up percentage from that. Um, with the subdivision, I think I prefer the same thing, similar to what Lexington has done. It doesn't have to be in that, the way they've done it, but very clear. And the reason why is because regardless. And the reason why is because regardless, whether they have the proposal in your fee, they have the gradient, they, all the things still have to be checked. And you still have to make sure that they don't. And time is money at the end of the day. And we are balancing it out across all the subdivisions. And I would like to just see it be very crystal and then more deal with it on the cross-check. And have it balance out across all the subdivision applications.
Um, I'll jump in, Heather. There just aren't that many and.
No, there aren't, but.
In fact, there's so few, I think that's not, I, I just will say, it's, it's irrelevant. It, it, it won't achieve what you're, what you're thinking. On this, like building permits.
How is it irrelevant? Because?
Because there's so few of them.
Yeah, so this fee structure, and we could change the numbers and modify it to try to, but based on this fee structure that we currently have, we've probably got about three grand for Abbey Road.
Right.
And this simple structure, without these different calculations adding up to the number, would have, right off the bat, would have been 5,500.
But that's a peanut compared with the, how many, I'll go back to Brian. How many hours was spent on this of staff time?
I don't know, I think we're spending more on it. Yeah, I think we're spending more on it right now.
No, 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 no. No, you had a number.
I would just go back to the point, and I think that.
Wait, wait, I want an answer from Brian first, please.
It's, it's, it's right here. It's, it's, it's probably, it's 700 without legal is, and that's, that's probably not covering it, is the answer.
And so with that, we looked at the, we, we looked at the balance because that's what you're supposed to do, that big balance out. And so, so you said typically it would be more closer to 100, 200. And then looking at the hour of that, how much should each of those, looking at the hourly, pay for that, the town pays for those hours? What does that number equate to? And from there, that's where I saw that it just a simple administrative free fee they break down, gave it. Because at the end of the day, the law of how fees are settled, that you have, you cover your costs and you cannot cover more. And you.
So I actually don't think that, Brian, did you talk to Art about that? I, I don't think the town can recoup our cost on these types of things when we do permit fees. That was one of the questions I had previously.
Yes.
I'm not looking to recover costs, I'm looking to balance the costs.
Yes, you cannot balance, that's what, that's what Beth is saying and that is what Mina had said, is you cannot.
Can't balance it?
No, not even close.
But we can, we can, we can raise our fees so that we're not losing as money.
Yes.
So then if you can't think about it in terms of hours, where are the numbers ever coming from?
The reasonableness of what other communities are charging, I think that's really how you look at it, to be honest.
Loop, it's an endless loop of increase over years. Yeah.
I, I'd like to get back to something that Heather von Mering said about the building permits. And, and I recall in the past, Heather, that you've said that in some towns, when you go for your certificate of occupancy, you actually have to give an honest telling of how much you actually spent. And so that you will pay the difference.
Yes, you have to sign an affidavit that's certified.
Pardon?
You have to sign an affidavit that's certified by a note of exactly how much you spent on your construction.
And so, so in that case, you are getting a second chance to get a better number. So is there any way, I mean, that's, I think, what I would like to see is, and, and I think Maureen has, had mentioned that earlier, about, you know, after a certain number of months, reassess what's going on. So that's the part I think is, is key in, in making sure that we're not blindsided. I don't know how that works.
I think you would have to run that by legal, I, I'm not sure what.
I've been wanting to meet with legal, I want legal.
I think we really need to bring legal in. I agree with Maureen on this.
So that most likely, would that be Mina or Art on this? Brian, that's you.
I think, I thought it was, I believe it was Mina who answered, so, but I can see when they're next available.
And this is not going to be just even research on what other towns do. We are in a certain place that's different from most communities in Massachusetts. I would say maybe, maybe Newton is where we are, maybe Brookline, but they're very few where we are. And the number of hours we spent on Abbey Road is just proof of how bad it can get. And in my view, we didn't end up with a development off Forest, what's it, is it Forest Circle? But that would have been very similar to Abbey Road. I've seen a few of these, they're nasty and we're, that's what we're going to get.
Yeah, you know what though, is interesting though, is if, I know these will do like a flat fee for the subdivision, if you actually did it on the cost of the construction to create the subdivision. Because Abbey Road was not cheap as.
Well, that sounds better.
As.
Right, but it's, I think it's hard to, it's, it's hard to predict that what that would be at the application phase because there's so much that is subject to change during the public hearing process.
Well, then we can just modify.
Exactly, that's right, Dea, Dea, I'm with Dea about that.
I'd be interested in looking at it from that perspective. And then they, we can have them sign an affidavit at the end of how much it costs and adjust the fee.
Right.
I mean, because the amount of inspections, Beth, that your department has to do for these is many more inspections than the building department does on their permits. That they need to do, right? That they're not, it's not that they're slacking, it's just that this place is where they need to do inspections. But your department is, has to do way more inspections on these subdivisions. And it'd be interesting to see if we actually did do it as a fee-based, if it would be.
Yeah, so I mean, again, we, we can't, and, and I didn't see the emails that Mina responded, but the town can't, can't cover the cost of staff time in the application fee. So I would just encourage us to have legal counsel as part of the conversation to make sure what we're proposing jives with general law.
We, we cover 50% or we cover 80%.
And that, right, exactly. And I want to just throw out, it's moderately embarrassing, but I, I don't mind saying this. Maybe others of you have some idea, but I was shocked by how much our building permit cost to do this addition next door. It was $16,000, 16,000. So we're paying that for an addition on a house. And look at these fees, it doesn't make sense.
Um, so I think Brian and Beth, you have direction. If you could start the conversation with legal and then maybe we'll bring them into the next meeting on this issue. In the meantime, I don't think there, there are some subdivisions being filed. And we know we could, we can temporarily change that fee until we adjust it. Do you want to do that or keep with our current fee structure that we currently have in the meantime?
Well, yeah, I'm not clear of any, I mean, the only potential subdivision, and there's really no, I don't know exactly when that is, is the, the potential one for the connection to the veil. But in terms of another actual subdivision where a new road is being created with houses, I'm, there's, there's not one that's imminent.
Okay.
Well, may I suggest then that as an interim strategy, we take the inflation for whatever it's been for the last 10 or 12 or 15 years and apply it to all of these numbers, except for the zeros. Some of those should probably not be zero. And then just use that as an interim plan until we get back, we hear back from legal.
I, I'm with you, Dea. I think we just wanted, don't want to be exposed, so it's too, this chart is, I mean, I was there. It was okay at the time, but it's stupid, it's absurd.
So you guys from 2010 to 2020, when, when was this last worked on?
Oh, before 10.
I think it was approved before 2010, yeah.
So I believe it actually was '09.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably, I don't know if you compounded it over, you know, it's what, 3% inflation over 20 years or 15 years? I can't do that in my head.
Um, from 2010, looking at inflation calculators for the US, um, in the last 10 years, it was a 17.6% inflation from 2010 to 2020.
Yeah, I mean, we got, we need to, we need to.
That's a lot.
Well, but that's not.
For the dollar, it went to a dollar 18, so every dollar.
But that's across the US. And we know that the cost of living in Massachusetts has gone up much more quickly than that.
I agree.
So I think what we need to do is, can we get, can we get the, the town comptroller who knows, who does all of these things? And maybe get her to chime in on what, how inflation has affected town finances? Or when they do any sort of estimates for predictions in the future, what do they use for inflation?
Yeah, it should be Metro Boston, just the way housing costs are done.
Yeah. Yeah, I was going to say 20% off the cuff, so 17, it's not bad. But I know the cost of, the, the value of my house has gone up a lot more than 20% in the last.
Right, and that's relevant to creating lots.
20 cents difference in Boston from 2010 to 2020, based on the US Bureau of Labor Statistics in Boston.
Okay.
So it's a three cent, a two cent difference to the dollar.
That's a lot of money.
So 20 cents, so it's, you know, 20% higher.
So at least that gets us to, to when legal can talk to us. So I, I, I would go with that emotion, I mean, that motion.
Your, can you frame that again?
Uh, just what Brian has right down.
Well, I'll second it.
Um, do we need to discuss or are we good to go?
Well, it, it's a question. I am curious, anybody do any higher math here on any of these? I just would love to know how it relates to the Lexington fee for whatever is comparable there.
Well, we're not going to reach to that, I don't think. Because for instance, let's just look at four to 10 lots. If we, it goes from 1,000 up to 1,200. So we're still not getting anywhere near Lexington.
Yeah, so like I did the calculation, where's my little post-it, right? So Abbey Road was about 3,000, if we use Lexington, it was 5,500. If you use the 20% increase, it'd be, it'd be 3,600. That's not anywhere near 5,500, but that's the inflation.
Well, I'd like to go to that level.
That's why I was just, I was saying at this point, let's use Lexington's numbers.
Right, but I don't want to get rid of this chart, so I don't know.
Use this and keep this chart as a placeholder.
Correct.
Um, for future discussion and then when we come back and really with, with legal and everything. But at least using the Lexington figures, we know that they're vetted.
I would just, if I were you, I would just multiply the proposed number, the, the cost for the proposed number of lots by two or three to increase it for now and then leave everything else as it is.
I think that's good.
I mean, the number of lots is a, you know, easy enough thing to work out from a plan.
Can you scroll up real quick, Brian, to Lexington's? I just want to see, so there is two, three and four, plus the, plus the number of lots. So you're looking at three.
3,500 for definitive.
Okay, can you scroll down now?
So 3,500 for an easy three lot subdivision.
So that would be 3,000.
If you multiply that by three, like the proposed number of lots by three, and then add, you know, you'd add up whatever else is in the other categories. It would get you closer to that, to that Lexington number.
Yeah, these three numbers would go up 3X.
Yep.
Yep, so 1,500, 3,000, 6,000.
Stays, everything else stays the same.
Yep, I'm fine with that.
Me too.
Um, we had a motion on the table, though.
Yeah, we do have a motion that we haven't even voted, and it was seconded, so you got to vote.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
Withdraw.
Good, thank you. Um, so the motion has been withdrawn, Beth, thank you for that recommendation. I think that's the best way to do it, we keep the chart and that base number gets beefed up. So do we have a motion?
Well, it's, let's, yeah, so we're just going to multiply them by three?
Yeah.
It doesn't seem high enough.
Okay, let's multiply by four.
Well, since you're multiplying it by three for each of these, so a three lot subdivision, so this goes from instead of 1,000, instead of $1,000, you know, goes to $3,000.
No, you said just multiply the.
Oh, sorry, that's correct. So yeah, it was just, yeah. So maybe.
Well, I think the key is that for four to 10 lots, I don't think multiplying it by three is sufficient.
I think it's 2,500, 5,000 and then 7,500 or at this point, but looking at the numbers.
Oh, so, yeah, so 2,500, 5,000 and 7,500?
Yeah.
That, that seems reasonable.
And that's more in line with the Lexington's numbers as well.
And it starts.
I think it's 7,500, Brian, for the third one.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, I, I'll move that one.
I'll second it.
Uh, discussion? Let's vote, roll call, please.
Jurors, aye.
Hannah, aye.
Meister, aye.
Von Mering, aye, motion passes 4-0 with Betsy Cragor absent. All right, thank you so much, Beth, for your time on that. And two of you will meet with Art to see if there's other ways of.
Mina, but yes.
Uh, Mina, yes, sorry.
Well, I think you guys begin, but I think they need to come to us because I think some.
Yeah, no, but I think, I don't want Mina to come and be like, well, I don't know. So I'd like them to have a phone conference with Mina to say, this is what's going on, these are the concerns. Can you do research and then come to our meeting versus us telling him that he has to go do research then come back? So that's what I'd like them to meet prior.
Agreed.
And it's basically, I mean, you want to see if we can, one is to charge half at some point through a certain time period, uh, like I said here, and whether or not we can, uh, how much could we do as a percentage of the cost? Like, just like a building permit, but instead could we do a percentage of the amount of it costs to do the project?
Yeah, well, it's also, it's a question of the variables and that, I think our table is better than what Lexington is doing because the variables are not totally unknown when you get started. So I understand what Beth was saying, at some point, it's just, it gets worse and worse. But just the, I guess I'll call them bullet points, the things you noted, Brian. Those are variables like land transfer that's going to end up being, taking a lot of staff time.
Okay, got it.
Okay, um, so let's move onward to planning board liaisons. Um, so a few meetings ago, I had asked just to go through and update this, so it's been put on. We, we needed to do some shifts. Brian, by any chance, do you have your sheet with the planning board liaisons on it real quick? Do you have that?
Uh, yeah, you'll just have to give me just a second.
Okay, um, and so just do some shiftings. We usually do that once a year and I, I think it's time to do it for us. And, and then part of that too, we don't need to talk about the Tree by Law Working Group. We just need to make sure who we define who's going to be on it. I know, Dea, you said you wanted to be on it. I didn't know if any other member wanted to join him and I wanted to make sure that was open. And so that was also part, it actually goes into with the planning board liaison's discussion, who wanted to be working on the Tree by Law group. Um, so that's why that is on this agenda as well, is to talk about, we, after that meeting, we did define who was going to do it and work on that on our behalf. And the final item will be the Winchester Tomorrow Letter to the ZBA. So as soon as Brian gets the liaison list, I guess, is everyone happy with what you're assigned to? Do you want to roll off anything? Do you want to roll on something?
Well, I can't tell what I, what's greener, what grass is greener until I see the list.
It might be turf, Dea, you don't know.
No, I'm not going to turf.
Yeah, but it might look green, but it could actually be turf.
Well, I'll see whether.
You're interested in the trees, oh, good. I didn't want to nominate you, but I was hoping you'd take it on.
I said it, I said it three times, but for some reason, when I talk, it doesn't come through.
Yeah, it's, and, and I've been hearing a lot of people cut out this evening, so.
I'm sorry, did you say three times today or three times in our discussion last week?
Uh, today.
Oh, yeah, I totally didn't hear it at all. You're on it, Heather.
I am not controlling anyone's mute, just so.
No, I'm not on mute, but when I talk, it doesn't light up yellow, other people just keep talking.
Ah, so, uh, I'm having an issue with this, with this liaison. But we were going to be talking about, on the agenda, subdivision closeout. Um, and the most recent one that legal and Beth and I have been working on is for Williams Circle. The last really update here that is that Beth had sent. The last really update here, that is that, um, Beth had sent the remaining work that needs to be done. Um, and they're in the middle of getting that, getting the necessary contractors and legal work to be, to be done. The property actually has sold, but they're still, um, uh, working with us, and we are appreciative of them to continue working with us. Um, I don't know if Beth had anything other than, um, anything to add, but that was, that was the only other.
Brian, what circle? I, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting, but I keep waiting for you to go back, I just, where are we?
Uh, Williams Circle.
And I, oh, boy, that's so long ago, where is it?
Yeah, sure, I will, um.
It's off of Holton Street.
Yeah, I will, I will get there on a map and, and I get that up.
Fine, I'm still present, working.
Heather, Hannah, and you are muted at the moment.
That's cuz I'm next to a dishwasher.
Oh, okay.
Oh, so it's off of Holton?
Correct, so it's, um, it's at the end, it's at the end here, and there's some drainage structures that are, that are needed, they're kinda spanning two properties, and that was kinda the issue, there was no maintenance agreement, and, uh, they, uh, basically, what was approved by the planning board uh, didn't get built exactly the way to plan, so, um, engineering has been working, a- and I have been working with, uh, the family uh, and legal to, to get that, uh, fixed and or, uh, up to, uh, a place where it is, um, and, uh, if it's not built exactly the way it was, that at least it's going to accommodate what it was designed to do.
Thank you for the update, sorry I missed over that, I, I'm trying to push through, I don't wanna go till ten tonight. I don't think, my goal is to go early, earlier tonight, so, um, my apologies for skipping over that agenda item. I was reading fast, and it was not my intention to skip it, so thank you.
Anyway, so yeah, that's the, that's the only update we're gonna give for subdivisions at the moment.
We're getting down there, though, on the list, little by little.
Little by little.
Okay, I'm glad to hear, too, that the, uh, the owners are working with you.
So the next time we get a report, um, it's Maureen, could we have a, um, just the list? So we could, uh, it used to be a matrix of some kind, that, so we could actually see what's remaining?
Oh, sure, yes, I, um, yep, no problem.
Okay, um.
I'm gonna, um, get off the call unless you guys need me for anything else.
I don't see anyone, anyone need Beth for anything, or have any questions?
Nope.
None for me, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you, Beth.
Bye, everyone.
Thanks for coming, Beth.
Take care, thanks.
All right, um, are you having a problem grabbing, bringing it up, Brian?
Sorry, yeah, I, I need more than one screen is the problem, uh, managing the meeting. Um, I'm trying, it's hard, I can't find, uh, so I still need another few minutes, we could go on to something else, and well, um, while I try to look for this. Or we, yeah, I don't know what to tell you.
Um, oh, no, that's fine, um. Um, okay, well, when you look for it, and when you get it up, let me know, the, um, Winchester tomorrow letter to the ZBA. Do we, where are we standing with that? And Maureen, you, did you want a letter to the ZBA about it?
So, yeah, that was, that was my, uh, fault for putting that in, so the, um, what I was, uh, what I was going to add to the ZBA letter before June eleventh, which is when their meeting is, is transmitting our vote of to uh, withholding the site plan, and then the other thing that I was supposed to put in it was to, um, something related to the Winchester tomorrow, which has a conservation restriction across the street. I just found out today that Elaine Reeland, the conservation agent, have located the conservation restriction. So she, uh, is supposed to send that to me, she said that latest tomorrow, I will then incorporate that language into the vote.
Oh, great, thank you. So the document.
Is there a way, I suppose, could she, um, I mean, obviously she can, I would ask that she scan it and send it to the planning office, so, Brian, so you also have a copy, maybe a digital, and then file it some, I don't know how, what your file system looks like, but in a way that it could be located if people in the neighborhood ever wanna find out more about it.
Um, so I think it's in the conservation, it's in the conservation office, she has a file for, um, Winchester tomorrow, uh, based at eleven Leslie. So it's in the, it's in town, uh, it's in the conservation files, and I can, she's going to scan it and send it to me electronically.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, and that'll be attached to my letter to the ZBA with our decision.
Exactly, that was the intention, yeah.
Sounds great, I will do it, we talked about it, and I will do it, um, okay. We're just waiting on the liaison list.
Uh, is that, is that the last order of business?
Um, I believe so, did anyone have any new business that they wanted to bring up? There's also the approval of minutes.
Uh, so that was the April seventh minutes.
That was from last week that we didn't have time to.
Correct.
Um, I had one edit, and that's, um, and actually, to tell Nancy, I prefer to go by chair instead of chairperson. Not a big, not a big deal, my name and my, and the chair, chairperson. I take care of the chairs. Um, did anyone have any, uh, Maureen, did you have any edits for the meeting minutes?
Oh, I did pass it on to Brian, maybe.
Yeah, it was, it was actually my mistake, so, how bad is that? Um, but yeah, no, um, it was, it was spelled, um, uh, completely differently, and then I had fixed it, and then did a, replace all change, but I, I think I did it too quickly, and it switched, switched the E and the I of Art Krieger.
Okay, um, Diab, did you have any changes?
Um, I am actually, did we get a packet?
No, it's from the packet from the week prior.
It was the previous.
From last week.
We didn't have a chance to vote in, so we're.
Okay, good, I was a little confused as to what we were talking about, but when you, okay, no, I don't have any comments.
Okay, Heather, did you have any comments on those meeting minutes from last?
Hmm, I don't have it in front of me, was that a meeting I was at?
It was last week, we had, it was from last week, so.
Um.
I know we reviewed them last week.
We were gonna talk about it last week?
No, we were, we were gonna review them and vote them in. Um, I, I reviewed it, and I just had that one comment, I don't have my copy in front of me, though.
I'm sure it's fine, but I'm not looking at it.
Maureen, do you have your copy by any chance in your vicinity?
Um, I did.
Yeah, I remember reading it for the last, or the meeting that was supposed to be gone over, so. I'm okay with it.
Obviously, I read them, cuz I know that I caught the Art Krieger spelling. I do, I mean, they were very good, so I guess I'm just happy to vote them in. I guess for minutes going forward, though, I really am at the point where I, I'm ready, things are opening up. Um, I think it's time to ask the police to start delivering packets.
Um, they said they'll start when the town hall fully opens up, which it has not done yet.
Well, I saw the, the way the emails went, and I think it was a little more like, would you mind, would it be okay, or maybe we can wait? Um, no, I think we have to just state that we want them.
For some reason, I cannot locate the liaison list, um, Suzanne Gill gave it to me not recently, but she definitely has given to me, and I have searched all through, uh, and I cannot find it at the moment, this is very odd.
I know you sent it to us as well, I'm checking my email real quick to see if I can grab it. Diab, can you check yours as well?
I have it in mine, um.
It was not anytime recently.
Oh, not the liaison list, I have the minute.
Yeah.
You were asking about that.
I know there was, the only one I remember is the one that repeatedly misspelled Maureen's name. That's the one I remember.
Should we, can we vote the minutes in?
Oh, yeah, I, I move with it, we, uh, what is the date on those minutes?
Uh, May twenty-sixth.
Wait. I'm.
No, it's April seventh, it's April seventh.
April seventh. Yeah, I moved that we, uh, accept the minutes for the planning board meeting on April seventh.
Well, that's a different set, I apologize, I'm not even there, well, I'll second it, cuz I know those were April seventh.
Yeah, I don't think we got one from May twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I have it right here.
Okay, then where, where did you get them?
Uh, let's see, from Brian, emailing twenty twenty, May twenty-sixth draft. Hello, all, here are attached to the minutes from our last meeting on May twenty-sixth, and I should read this aloud, I think Nancy did an amazing job.
Okay, so now I'm very confused. Cuz it wasn't in, uh, now my, my computer doesn't wanna talk to me anymore.
Well, um, while I'm here, and I know Nancy's listening, there are a couple corrections, I see that, um, my name, it's Maureen, it says J, like Janet or something, Meister, it's an I. Um, I don't need the I, but if it's there, it should be an I, and then also, in those same minutes, it says, um, for members absent, it says Margaret, and then, um, Betsy Craig, it's Elizabeth, and then Betsy Craig. Maybe, um, Heather von Mering, are we voting on the May twenty-sixth minutes?
Um, I'm looking for them as well.
Okay, so they, I found them, they were sent out on last Friday.
Yeah.
And, um, so.
Oh, yeah, so I wasn't looking at these, I was looking at the ones that were, that were previously given to us from, from Suzanne Gill.
Yeah, that's the one I was looking at, so I have not reviewed the meeting minutes from May twenty-sixth.
Yeah, so.
Can we, can we do those at the next meeting?
Well, yeah, we still, yeah, we were still ready to do the April seventh ones, but we, if you haven't read the May twenty-sixth, they were, the April sevens were, were ones from last week.
Right, so I, my motion for, to approve the April seventh is still stands.
I'll second it.
Um, I, um, all those in favor, roll call votes, Ron.
Jurius, aye.
Meister, aye.
Von Mering, aye.
Did we lose Heather again?
Nope, she's muted.
Oh, I already said Hannah.
Thank you, for I?
Yes.
Thank you. Four oh, Betsy Craig absent. Meeting minutes are approved. Um, let's, yeah, let's wait for the new ones, um, for, uh, for the next meeting, so, um, we, those all came to through our email. Um, so now luckily, they don't have to come through, um, our packets to review. Um, but I was not looking for meeting minutes through my meeting, through my note, my emails.
Yeah, I just, um, so the email subject said twenty twenty, May twenty-sixth draft.
Correct.
I think had it said meeting minutes on there, just so that.
Meeting minutes for review.
Yeah, something like that, it would have caught my eye.
That I needed to review it for this meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so, Brian, um, going back to the liaisons, um, we can do the full list later, the big, um, did you get, did Mary Ellen get back to you on the, um, on how the position on the capital planning is?
Uh, no, she has not.
Okay, well, so then we might, well, let's just wait, and we'll do it, we'll do it later, so, I asked Brian to reach out to Mary Ellen because the capital planning position is appointed. Um, and it is unclear, and we have to go back to the laws behind the capital planning, uh, if it is a term or if it is a yearly appointment, or just at the planning board's, uh, request, so, um, that I had him reach out to that because we need to get, um, someone in on capital planning, that is a voting member of capital planning. Um, that is typically someone on the planning board, uh, and so that is, that, that's a big one that we currently don't have, um, representation on. The waterfield lot, are we all set with that, um?
Ooh, what's going on there?
So there's going to be a, um, meeting on Wednesday, June tenth, um, that's gonna be put on um, by, uh, Lisa, and I will be there for questions, but I'm not, uh, there presenting, but it's going to be uh, JM Goldson, who has been working with the Waterfield Lot, um, RFP Committee. Um, to develop the RFP, so it's going to be a listening session, and, uh, not just a listening session, but for public feedback, um, June tenth at seven thirty, it's on the calendar, Winchester.us. Um, and we'll be taking comment, um, probably in a webinar form, similar to if you've gone through the, the mock town meeting that we went through the other day. It's gonna be similar to that type of, uh, webinar, rather than a meeting function, so with a question and answer.
So, Brian, were, were people selected from the proposals that were sent in?
So out of all of the proposals that were, uh, submitted, I believe there were nine, um, eight of them met the minimum criteria to move forward. So those, so eight of them are, are still in the running, and the I, the, and it's anticipated that after the RFP, which will be open until August thirty, so the meeting is June tenth, and then the RFP gets out on June twenty-second. And then it's open until August thirty-first, so it's about two and a, two and a half months, about two and a half months.
Do we have a document for the planning board to review or respond to as a board?
So we just got, uh, the draft that's being, uh, so the select board just got it today, uh, we, we, um, and they're the ones who are going to be, it's technically, the RFP is from the select board, so they just got it today, so, so we're gonna be getting it, uh, you know, I, I can send it out, uh, after tonight, or, you know, obviously, um, it's like, I can send that out, but they just got it this afternoon.
So, no, we're still going to be the special permit granting authority for this?
Uh, it's possible that it would be a special permit, a special permit, or it potentially could be, uh, a forty B through the ZBA. I don't know how it, what, what will be, but those are the two options, but, you know, um, and, yes, those are the two options that are available.
Well, it can't be a forty B through the ZBA. Did I mishear you?
No, that's what I said.
Because they're not the special permit granting authority for that law, we are.
No, for, but for comprehensive permits, the, uh, comprehensive permits, meaning forty Bs, do go through the ZBA regardless of zone.
Oh, I, that, that is, sorry, I, I find that an unacceptable approach.
It's not, it's, it's not my, it's not an approach, yeah, it's not an approach.
No, they don't need to file a forty B to.
No, no, they don't have to file, they don't have to, I'm, I, I, maybe I shouldn't have said anything, but Maureen, Maureen said that, uh, we are the special agreement, special permit granting authority, and I'm saying there is a possibility that wh- whoever is chosen could go through, uh, the ZBA, that's all I was trying to say.
Yeah, town meeting has to approve selling or giving the land for a forty B that goes to the ZBA as well.
Well, no, there's no doubt there would have to be some type of, uh, either a lease or a land transfer, something would, there's no doubt there's town meeting action, so that, that's.
Brian, with that, um, the parking, cuz a lot of town meeting members have asked, and I always, I don't have the answer. But the, to go forward with the sale, or transfer, or rent, or lease of that land, and not have a plan in place for that parking? Is that part of this RFP, or what is the? And not have a plan in place for that parking, is that part of this RFP, or what is the select board's plan with parking?
They have to, um, so the, um, it's unclear exactly what the plan is, because the idea is they want to see what. I mean, that's the part, that's part of the RFP, um, there's no doubt that a significant amount of public parking would get taken away by building. Um, it's a question of how much public parking are they gonna do, well, what types of access are they gonna have, um, there's no, there's no doubt that access. For, uh, the buildings and for, for trout, for, you know, truck deliveries and stuff like that is going to be taken into consideration. In terms of how many spots are gonna be there, I mean, that's, that's, uh, eventually. What town meeting would be, would be voting on, but we're gonna see what's possible, the idea is that they want to develop. The, the, the lot with a building, uh, so there's no doubt a lot, there will be a lot of loss of public parking.
Are pretty much all the proposals, um, affordable housing?
We have not seen any of them, uh, based upon, just, you know, what, what a lot of them do. They're all over the board, meaning they're all, they're everything from affordable, affordable, uh, housing only types of developers. Who do, you know, buildings that are fifty percent to even a hundred percent affordable, uh, all the way, uh. To other market rate type developers that maybe have done forty Bs, or maybe they haven't done forty Bs, but they've done large scale development in town centers.
But I think some of them gave a little more indication of what they would be proposing, they just didn't put all their cards on the table.
Yeah, I mean, it was just an RFQ, that was the whole point was, um, but yeah, but I think now is when, wh- once they respond to the RFP, we're gonna get a, a really good idea. Of what could be possible there, um, and part of it is, is, is talking about any type. Of public parking loss and/or, uh, if there's any potential, uh, additional, and, uh, if there's any potential public parking that's gonna remain on the site.
Okay, thank you, um, and Heather, you're on that, and you're all set with that one, because that one's ramping up, I think, right, Brian?
There've already been quite a few meetings.
Yeah, you, you're all set, I just want to make sure you're all set, I'm happy that you're doing it, I just wanna.
Yeah.
Okay, and you have the other big one is Concom, which is you?
Yeah, I have to admit, I, I have not, I don't do much with them. Mostly because we have competing schedules.
Um, yeah, but you're gonna be doing the trees.
I'll be doing the trees.
Um, and, uh, housing?
Housing, I'm, I'm fine sticking on housing.
Okay, Maureen, are you pretty content?
Well, I guess I'm on the fence, I, at some point, I'd like to get back to the historical commission as a former member and former chairman of that commission.
Well, I was the liaison for historical last year, so. If you want to get on, what are you doing, let's, can we swap?
Sure.
What have you got?
Well, design review.
Um. I'm not terribly strong at design review, I'll admit that that is one of my major failings.
Well, I could do both.
Well, I'm more than happy to do it, I just, I, I think it would be a disservice to the board.
Uh, I, I hate.
I'll do both.
Ever both of you are happy in terms of those, I am, my bandwidth is spread right now with.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And if I, if I, I would like to take on the, um, with the select board. Which got their hands full right now with all sorts of stuff, and, um. And if I take on, uh, the, the, uh, the capital planning, I'm, I'm out, so.
You certainly are.
Yeah, so, um. Maureen, what, um, so you're, you've ju- you've got design review right now?
Yeah, it's very light, there, I mean, there, there's, it's just so.
Well, if you don't, yeah, if you don't mind taking on historical.
No, no, no.
I think you're definitely. Got the, the, the experience and the background for that more than I do, um, so. I hate to sound like I'm trying to weasel out of it.
No, if you do the tree thing, that's going to get pretty, that'll be pretty ambitious.
I, I will do the tree thing, I'll do my tree dance.
Okay, I'm trying to find, I, so Maureen sent to us. Um, the, the reference of, so the appointments are in the bylaws. And so I'm trying to find my town bylaws real quick, just to see, because we can get the answer ourselves as well. So. Real quick online, the actual of the appointment. Thank you for sending that, Maureen.
Oh, I'm, I'm something, when I've got both a computer and an iPad, but I'm not good at my phone.
Um, so it's chapter.
Two.
It's chapter two.
And then section four point five.
Just see if we can get this taken care of. Section two, what?
Um, section four, it's chapter two, um, section four point five.
Getting there.
It does say serving three-year terms, that's kind of weird, because it says, one appointed by, well, I see. By the planning board, no, from among its members, well, for a three-year term for the planning board, well, the. People aren't always on the board for three years themselves.
It does limit it, though, it says the three-year term, select board appointed only.
They serve at our pleasure.
They serve at our pleasure, yeah.
The three members appointed by the board of selectmen serve the three-year terms.
Right.
So we can, the planning board can change anytime.
So I move that Heather von Mering be our representative to the capital planning committee.
Oh, I'm happy to second it.
Discussion?
No, let's, let's get this through quickly.
Vote.
Jurious, I.
Meister, I.
Hannah, I.
Von Mering, I.
Say it happily.
Four O, I will be serving on capital planning on behalf of the planning board. And, um, Brian, do you want to reach out to, um, assistant town manager to let him know?
Yeah, I'll let him and.
So that I can start getting all the communication going forward?
Will do.
Thank you, um, all right, well, we'll go, we'll find this list, and, um, we'll, we'll bring it back quick, quickly, if, and if no one has any changes, we'll just, oh. Yeah, it's right here, oh, no, oh, oh.
I mean, things come and go.
This, that, yeah, this was the list of, of, of committees and, and boards that, that we are, uh, are part of.
But there's also the local historic district commission, commit, study committee.
Yeah, there's a lot of them, I think we'll come back, let's do this another day, but at least we got the main, the big, the biggies out of the way. Um, the field management committee's, uh, pretty much been disbanded, I'm, I sit on that, but we finished the plan. Um, so, well, let's go through that another time, like, we just want to make sure we're all set on the big ones, and when we have the full list, we can go through it. Um, and then, some of them is not even attending the meetings, it's just, if, if there's something comes up, you're the person that goes and deals with it. Um. Sharing the load, um, any other items you want to discuss before we adjourn? I'm happy to entertain an adjournment then.
I move we adjourn.
A second.
So we need to discuss, all those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Jurious, I.
Hannah, I.
Meister, I.
Von Mering, I, meeting is adjourned at nine thirty-two on Tuesday, we will. Oh, um, we could talk about it actually, since the meeting is adjourned, do you guys even want to meet next week? We don't have to talk about this in a meeting, because it's regarding scheduling, but.
Uh, yeah, of whether or not we need to meet, of whether or not we need to meet before the six-thirty start time.
I don't think we need to meet.
I don't think so either, I just want to make sure before I don't do any meetings or anything, that you're okay with that, Maureen, you're good with that?
No meeting, no, right, I agree.
We may, we may, there is a chance we may want to be in touch with each other, um, I, during the meeting, um. I don't believe we're gonna be able to do that through Zoom, so, um. It's possible that during the meeting, uh, which we, uh, we, we could have a group text, which that is allowed, um, it. I don't know if we would want to do that, but it may be, I mean, that, we could just start that, uh, if we need to, if we need to talk to each other for some, for any reason.
Can we just start up a Zoom planning board meeting and use the chat feature there, or too many Zoom?
No, no, during, during, during the town meeting, women, like, I don't believe, yeah, we can't have it, we can't have two meetings going, I don't think.
However, we could create a chat that is just between certain people, can't we?
Not, not, no, the town meeting, not, though, it's a, it's not a meeting, it's a webinar, it's a different type of function of Zoom, that you can't do that.
I like the text idea.
I think the te- text is gonna be the easiest, uh, just because it's gonna be off the computer, so I think it's gonna be.
And then you can, um, because it's public record, then.
Yeah, it's public record.
Um, you can print it from your, whatever, and then put it in the file.
I mean, I don't anticipate it, but it's possible that we might want to, to, to talk about that of who's gonna, you know, just, it might be real-time stuff.
Like, who's gonna answer why?
Right, yeah, it, you never know.
So, um, then Brian, does that mean that all boards who are talking that way will be public record?
I believe if they're.
I was pickler for this one during town meeting.
I would, I would imagine if they're, if they're, texts, so texts definitely are public record, if it's certainly texting, talking about business. Then yes, that's public record, in my opinion.
Yep, um.
Then I would be, well, can't we just do emails?
We could, but you have a delay in the, the text is the fastest way, so like, if someone asks a question, the planning board, we can quickly address it through text. And then decide who's gonna speak, or.
Yeah, because emails are another window.
Yeah, the, the point is that we want to get out of the windows.
Yeah, uh, Maureen, are you okay with, uh, texts?
Well, I can, and I'm not crazy about it, mostly because I found, even with the practice, that between the chat going on and the. Peter Haley was talking, it just seemed like it was crazy, um, but if you want, if you feel you need to, I, generally, when we're in the town meeting. Things come so fast anyway, that the chair answers the questions, I think you should just jump in.
All right, let's say, ask us to consider something on our article at fourteen.
Well, I think you should handle it.
And make an executive decision?
Yep.
I mean, the only questions they're gonna talk about are, you know, why, what is this study about, that's what, that's what the questions are gonna be about, so as long as we have what we have in the, um, you know. That, that's what we should prepare for, is that, what is this study going to be about?